I'd like to call this regular council meeting of February 23rd order. First item that we have on the agenda is a public hearing for zoning amendment by law number 2101. This is a bylaw to amend the city of Revelstoke's zoning bylaw to include craft distillery as a defined prohibited use in the central business district, C1 zoning. And this public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 898 of the Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council, and all persons present who believe their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given the opportunity to address council or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Those of you who wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw should commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and address, and then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. Normally, we have a speaker's list. We haven't had anybody sign up to speaker's list, but I will be calling for comments from the public three times. And again, just to come out, you can stand right there or at the podium, whatever you prefer. Mr. Schrager, do you have anything you want to add to this?
No, it's a question, George.
Okay. So we're here again, just to remind everybody, this is zoning amendment by law number 2101 to add craft distillery as a defined prohibited use in the central business district. Is there anybody that would like to speak to council on this zoning amendment by law? Yes, sir. Mr. Jones?
Yep. George, if you'd like. Just want to talk for five minutes, just do a bit of a background interview, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So, the important part is that craft distillery itself, what I'm aiming to try and bring to the town, and talk about some of the other locations where there's already craft distilleries in use, and provide perspective of what sort of business this is and what sort of scale it is, and also find its answer to any questions anyone might have. So, craft distillery can produce no more than 50,001 litres, it's very specific in the legislation, so it's a very small operation, and it produces all experience through distillation process. Effectively, I will ferment like a beer, for example, and then I'll transfer it through a distillation process, so I can produce my products. From my perspective, it's very small scale, to give you an idea, all of my equipment could fit into this half of the room from a distillation perspective, so it's very small. It's all about the passion for the product, and also about the quality itself. It's about as far away from a Diageo as you can get from this perspective. And what I would say is that, since the legislation changed in April of 2014, there's been an absolute influx of craft distilleries popping up everywhere. And to give you sort of an example of where they are, they're on Main Street, Boulevard, Avenue down in Kelowna, which is actually the main street, so we've got a little distillery down there. We've got them down in Tentictum, which are actually our acreages. And if you look into Vancouver itself, you've got them everywhere, from the busy little streets right the way through to some of the industrial areas as well. So they are becoming a lot more common, and a number of cities have now got them. Far as gems are silly, my aspirations are very simple. I want to make small amounts of very high-quality product, concentrated on vodka, gin, and whiskey. I need to make a brilliant vodka in order to make a gin. Gin is where my real passion is. And one of the things I want to do is I want to have a tasting bar, and then subsequently open it up so that it's a full-on bar, and then ultimately hopefully be able to provide food as well as the business growth. One thing I am looking to do is run gin evenings, so if anyone's interested, where I will give people a tour of the distillery, and from there, we'll actually be able to make a bottle of gin myself, after doing a lecture on how the tanks work and some of the history, because it's quite a dark history to gin, and then look to run those courses as well just to inform, educate, and have fun with them. The final piece really is, I think, that it offers huge economic benefits to the town. To start with, if you need plus one person, then hopefully you can grow up to about 25 people working as a team to create these products. And also, I think it offers real synergies to tourism trade that are here. It complements any businesses or any tourist business that's here, and it gives another reason why people should come to the town and visit. So in summary, what I want to say really is, it's a very small business, it's designed to make very high-end products, and to be a very much a tourist attraction for the city itself. If you have any questions, talk, please.
Okay. Everybody, any questions or comments for Mr. Jones?
Just, can I...
Counselor Nixon?
Just, do you have experience working in a distillery business in Brooklyn?
I've experienced in the food industry in Brooklyn, I've also done distillery before. The reason it came about is actually because of my father, he was a character. He actually, back in his seventies, acquired with a friend of his who was a police officer, a distillery, and they were making it exclusively in the back of his house until my mom turned around and said, "No." And so, it became a bit of a story with the family, and so it's always been something which I've wanted to come back to. But yes, I do have some experience.
Okay. Thanks very much. Looking for any comments on this zoning amendment by law number 2101 from the public? Anybody who'd like to have any comments on this zoning amendment by law? Any comments from the public a second time on this zoning amendment by law number 2101 to add craft distillery as a use in C1 zoning? For a third and final time, I'm looking for any comments from the public on zoning amendment by law number 2101? Any comments, questions from council? I'd like to have a motion that this public hearing for zoning amendment by law 2101 be closed. Counselor O'Nino, Counselor English, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Moving into item B, looking for a motion.
If you wish. Make a motion that zoning amendment by law number 20...pardon, 2101 be read three times.
Motion by Counselor Sol, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. We're just move right into the regular council meeting. First item that I have is announcements from Mayor, and I have a couple of things that I would like to talk about. First one is, I want to remind everyone that a public information session, a public hearing, is set for March 8th for the Nico Road development. The information session will be at 6 o'clock on March 8th at the community center, and it'll go right into the public hearing at 7:00 PM, again, on March 8th at the community center, and that's for the development up on Nico Road. Just came out today is that we are going to have a public information session on the preliminary designs for the Mutes Road intersection, and that's the intersection down at Tim Horton McDonald's and the new Starbucks by the highway. So, public information session for the preliminary highway interchange designs, that's going to be on March 2nd at 7:30 at the community center. Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor English, seconded by Counselor Brothers, all those in favor? Motion's carried. And I need a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of February the 9th. Counselor Nixon and Counselor Brothers, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Is there any business arising from those minutes of February the 9th? Hearing none, I can move right into delegations and presentations, and the first delegation that we have is Megan Tabor and Tom Tishkic for Tours in Revelstoke. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would like to move to the podium, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Here we are once again, back to give you our sort of review of what's happened with Tours in Revelstoke over the year of 2015. It's been quite, as everybody will know, a busy year for us, and every year just gets exponentially busier for us at Tours in Revelstoke. You, we've given you a little info kit there, which you can sing along to as we move through the presentation, but this gives you a bit of an idea here, and we'll go quickly about our primary markets that we're doing. So, of course, Alberta, Saskatchewan, the Okanagan, Vancouver, and Ontario in Quebec are our Canadian areas. Secondary is other Canada to some degree, but also importantly now, especially with the exchange, is Washington State, California, Oregon. We are dabbling a little bit in partnership with Revelstoke Mountain Resort into places like Boston and so on. We are looking to some degree at Europe, but we haven't done anything there yet, but we do have fairly active activity in Australia, New Zealand, and we do work with Destination British Columbia and places like China and Korea, but we don't do anything specifically ourselves. Of course, we're doing FITs, which is called a fully independent traveler, and also group leisure programs, and as you can read through, we'll see the rest of the areas that we're going into with that. We also do media marketplaces, and this is becoming very, very significant in how we're promoting Revelstoke, and this is hosting of travel writers. We just had a dinner, Megan and myself, last night with four travel writers that are coming in to do ski product, but also now they're extremely interested in coming back to do summer product stories. And yes, the dinner, you know, costs a few dollars, absolutely, but the free press that we get out of that afterwards, we couldn't afford it at all. Those are garnered through forums like Canada Media Marketplace, through Destination Canada, and through Go Media Marketplace, again, through Destination Canada, and we partner with them. And then also Mountain Travel Symposium, which goes into the travel trade for ski, snowboard, and FIT, and group travel. That just shows you really quickly some of the people that we've hosted over this past year. Yes, they do have fun, and, but they also do give us what we feel is very good value. And I might add that those people, they're not just people that show up to us, they are actually vetted through Destination British Columbia and through Kootenay Rockies Tourism, so they're not, they are qualified before they get here. And media coverage is what we have, these are just a few samples of many, many things that are there for us. So media is very, very important to us.
So, as you can see, we've given you guys a ray of collateral that you can go through. The significant thing in 2015 is that we essentially rebranded so that all of our publications have the same look and feel to them, and that's where we're heading in the future as well. So in 2015, we produced a visitor experience guide, a city map, as well as a large city map in Grizzly Plaza. We do weekly WhatsApp publication, wedding brochure, hiking map, we do a gallery snowmobile map. So that was our, sorry, that was our 2015 guide. As you can see, it has the old, so not any new branding in 2015, and then our city map, and now we've got our new style of branding. This weekly WhatsApp goes to an email distribution list, so everyone who's interested in receiving it goes through all the events happening every week. And in the high season, in the summer, we have visitor center staff going around to the hotels, dropping off the events, so that the hotels have another front desk for their visitors in the high season. So this just gives you a look of what's been happening in 2015, and in 2016, we have the new visitor experience guide, which you have in front of you, as well as mountain biking and dirt biking will be the updated pieces that will kind of round out the full gambit of production. The only piece that we did produce in-house is the snowmobiling, but we did offer support to the snowmobile club so that they would use our branding on the cover, they actually produced that piece on their own. The rest of that's all done in-house with the help of a graphic designer, but we do all the content on our own. There's a new theme in the visitor guide this year, when you guys look through it, you'll see that we've tailored our activities to a softer market this year. We've had some feedback from our visitor center that not everybody's looking for the extreme ski experience, so now we're offering three different levels for every sector, so that it ranges from the family who's never experienced it to the hardcore enthusiasts that we all know so well. We've really ramped up our digital marketing in 2015, as I'm sure many organizations have in Revelstoke as well. The pinnacle of digital marketing, we have three themes that we're really focusing on, and that's content, social media, and strategic website design. And I'll just kind of go through these briefly, just a couple of campaigns that we implemented in 2015. So we had a summer photography shoot, so we try to get new photography every year. We've got really talented local photographers that we use for that, really happy to have them in town. We continued on with our video edits for... We'll just show you a couple of the video samples. So this was a mountain biking video that was released in, I believe, July of 2015.
The Real Gems here are, I think, up in the Alpine, you know, about a couple of serious trails, like Frizzy Ridge, X-C Trail, and Keystone Center Basin Trail, two absolute gems, world-class trails up in the Alpine. Lots of downhill trails, downhill trails, you can get downhill, break through town, ride all these downhill trails. I've known some tourists that's got, you know, 60 kilometers roughly of amazing, sick track trails, all different styles, fast, slow, we detect, no, or speed, all that kind of stuff. You know, friendly for families, all the way up to your super advanced expert riders. It's right up there with, you know, some of the best trails in the world. I hear a lot from a lot of visiting riders that it's, you know, the best trail of their whole trip. The people that are on vacation, they have limited time, and they just want to show up with their bikes and ride the best trails and not have to worry about anything. Yes, there's lots of great information sources here for all the trails that we have. The Revelstoke Cycling Association, who's one of the main drivers behind all of our awesome trails, has a great website, bikerevelstoke.org, you can check out all the trail information there. Revelstoke Tourism has produced a nice bike map that we have, that you can check out in both bike shops in town, Float and Scootum, as well as the Visitor Information Center, and get all the information for the trails you need. So, yeah, if you're coming through town, you want to do some riding, give us a call, and we'll hook you up with the best trails.
So that's just me back with one of the sectors that we really start to highlight, mountain biking, to try and show the high Alpine to the family-friendly. Frank DeRosie lives in town, he's done a few edits for us, including dirt biking, water sports, and some winter ones as well. The next campaign that we ran, we ran a fall campaign with our hashtag #TheRevelstoke, and we had some of our Revelstoke ambassadors judge the campaign. So I'll just show you a short video clip of that as well.
Hey, my name's Chris Burden, I'm a professional ski-er, I live in Revelstoke, and I've been asked to be one of three judges for a new social media campaign called The Real Stoke. Yeah, starting October 21st, tag Revelstoke photos with hashtag #TheRealStoke, and let us know what that means to you at crevelstoke.com/real. For me, I guess The Real Stoke is the ability to access so many activities, you know, starting from the valley bottoms, Conde River, to the old growth forest, to high Alpine peaks around Revelstoke, you know, winter, spring, summer, fall, there's always something amazing to shoot here. Yeah, I mean, we have it all here, from skiing, to biking, to paddling, to hiking, to trail running, and for me, that's The Real Stoke.
So that was just a short campaign that we ran in the fall, talk a little bit more about it, and then finally, we teamed up with some brand ambassadors this year as well, and we'll definitely ramp up our digital products, so this is one of our brand ambassadors.
I'm Chris Burden, I'm from Revelstoke, and I have a partnership with C Revelstoke. For those that don't know me, professional skier, I live in Revelstoke, and it's my favorite place in the world. Be sure to check out C Revelstoke's website, Facebook page, and Instagram, and I'll be putting up content over the next couple of months.
So that's some of the highlights from 2015 that we ran. We also teamed up with Revelstoke Mount Air to produce a blog post bi-monthly on different topics that are relevant to Revelstoke and different activities as well. So just a little bit more information on the campaign, they'll kind of play us through these, but if you're interested, just send me an email. So the Real Stoke campaign, we ran it from October 19th through December 30th first, and it was really capitalizing on our winter product. We put Ted cards up in local businesses, we gave away weekly prizes for the momentum, and our grand prize was the ultimate winter getaway, where they experienced five days in Revelstoke, accommodation, $500 to spend on restaurants in town, and we had them here at the end of January, the winter. So, goals for this was just encouraging our fans to share our stories, increasing the use of The Real Stoke, and obtaining rights for future photo use of this campaign. So these are some of the entries that we had. We asked people to tell us what The Real Stoke means to them, so we got people, you know, letting us know, Real Stoke is about getting outside and challenging myself, that kind of thing, and our winner was this photo, and he, it wasn't necessarily based on likes, although he has a really strong Instagram following, so that definitely helped when it came to Revelstoke as well. But for him, The Real Stoke was living in the moment, and we thought that was quite a passionate story. Yeah, so nutshell results is we saw a 300% increase in the use of our hashtag, and some of the earned word of mouth is definitely priceless, it's hard to see there, but that was one of the Facebook posts that we're encouraging people to enter the campaign, and the first girl is tagging nine of her friends, basically telling everyone to sign up because she wants to come to Revelstoke. So that kind of social media is, it's really hard to buy. Our brand ambassadors, we saw a video with Chris Burden, so we teamed up with Chris and Nadine this year, Nadine's a snow wheeler in town. We got them to produce content for us, we did those introductory videos to validate the partnership, and we're leveraging their social media following. We saw a very successful campaign with these ambassadors. Nadine did a blog post for us called Choose Where You Want to Grow Old, and those are some of the comments that came out of them, like, "Great ad campaign, I'm going to retire there, it would be a dream to move out there from Ontario." So, just really good engagement that we're getting through our brand ambassadors, they're telling our story for us. We hosted Chris Burkard here, he's a world-renowned photographer, we partnered with Micah Helly skiing, Revelstoke Mountain Resort, Destination DC. He came at the end of December, shot at Micah for four days, and then came and shot in and around Revelstoke and up at the resort for days. Some of the results from him is we had over half a million likes on the photos that he posted, so I don't know how else you can reach half a million people. But, so yeah, so obviously, he wasn't free either, but it's exactly the type of engagement we're looking for. You can see some of those photos have like over 56,000 likes on his photo there. So that was a great experience, it was really nice to partner with some local businesses in town. We've seen, we saw 500 followers just for him being here, we've seen over 800 since he's been here, and we're getting a lot of momentum on our Instagram channels, and we expect to see more as he does submit to print magazines as well, so we're hoping that we'll get some of the photos pretty soon printed as well. Just play us through social media, so we've obviously seen a big increase in our social media due to the campaigns kind of mentioned before. A large focus in 2015 was Facebook, targeted posts are, you can basically target posts exactly to who you're looking at. If you want a snow wheeler who's between the ages of 40 and 50, who, you know, likes to holiday, you can literally push a message into his face or her face, so we're seeing a lot of success with that, and as we mentioned, the Instagram channel's become a really popular trend to leverage our hashtag, TheRealStoke. Finally, our website, so the big change in 2016 is that we're going to be finally moving that branding to our branding with everything else, so we'll be a total package by the end of 2016. In 2015, we saw over 110% increase mainly due to the strong campaigns that we're running online. Our website right now is brand awareness, we're selling experience, and we're trying to get visitors to come to our site so they can actually go and visit our stakeholders' websites. And that's all I have from the digital side, thanks.
Hi. So, all address myself, most people don't know me, my name is Gita Sajad, and I'm new at the visitor center, so I'm the manager. So we put a slide for you to see a bit what's going on with our numbers. We've seen an increase of 3% overall visitors last year. We know we had over a 30% increase in 2014, we believe we did, so that's still really good, and we're seeing numbers increasing, not just in the busy summer months, also all over, even in the short season, yeah, shoulder season as well. And something that's new that I got into last summer, so Destination DC has offered some grants to develop new ways of reaching to our visitors. So, we applied last minute last summer to get a small grant, and we hired somebody to go to events. We called them the Mobile Ambassador, so that person was going around all the different events in town with information first, and we also sent them with a little survey that we put together. We took that opportunity to also spread the Real Stoke hashtag, so we were giving out some stickers as well. We got great results, one of our first goal was to reach different visitors than the one that are really coming at the visitor center, so we had 81% of the visitor that were not visitors of the main site, so that was really successful as well. We got the grant again for this summer, so we're hoping to make this program work even more successfully, and hopefully, we're going to see that program going over the years. And that's it all. And that's all I have for the various...
That is the longest 10 minutes you've ever had in your life. Sorry, I'll keep moving real quick here. So, of course, we support events within the community, and we work not only with the local clubs and organizations to help support them, like the Nordic Ski Club, the Revelstoke Downhill Ski Club, the Remy Riders with events, but we also try to work with events that are kind of basically prepackaged and come into the community. Five Peaks Trail Running Series has chosen Revelstoke more than once to come and do their events, so we're quite thrilled about that. We did support Axis Mundi Lifestyle Festival, that will unfortunately not be continuing, which is disappointing, however, to run these types of events are challenging and expensive, so, you know, but we did learn from this, and I think we'll move on from that one, just saying. Another fairly significant part of our promotion are consumer shows, and there you can see a fairly comprehensive list of shows that we do, that can show you also the busyness. I think Mark is probably in that picture there somewhere, looking around for his new bike, but that just gives you an idea that even though social media is extremely important and very, very liable in what we do, there's nothing like the face-to-face contact and selling at these kinds of forums. And so, we work in conjunction with Kootenay Rockies Tourism, Destination British Columbia, Revelstoke Mountain Resort, and we also work with Revelstoke Snowmobile Club, and we also work with other associations in town or private entities to partner at shows coming up, and you'll see the list there, it's fairly good, right down to Boston, Auckland, Melbourne, Sydney, that's some of our far-reaching, into Saskatchewan, which is very important for us, and into Seattle, you know, Washington State, into California. And that's our booth in Sydney, Australia. Print initiatives. There's a whole list of what we're doing. We don't do tons and tons of print anymore. A lot of it has been garnered into our social media, but this just gives you an idea of the various looks that we have and how we promote the destination. And we also promote the events. And that would be actually from a New Zealand publication. Now, how do we pay for all of this? And beyond the generous contribution that comes from the city of Revelstoke towards tourism, maintaining amount of revenue comes from the MRDT or the municipal regional district tax, which is the 2% tax, as I'm sure you're all aware of. As you can see, we've been growing, and the reason I have an estimated total in 2015 is because our revenues come in three months after the fact. And so in March, we'll figure out what December was, but I just extrapolated to the point that was around $529,000 coming in for the tax, which is about a 10% increase. And from 2008, which was half or part of the year in 2008, to 2015, it's a little over $2.9 million that we've brought in to do tourism promotion and marketing. So this, I mean, we have to do this. There's no way that we could be competitive in the marketplace without this, and there's no way that Revelstoke could do as well as we are without the money that we have to do promotion out there. Now, the members out here, these are the people who are responsible for collecting that extra 2%. And so these are our partners here for the Revelstoke Accommodation Association. And I will mention that I just did a survey yesterday, and beyond these, there's, if you go online to one site, there's a listing of 193 vacation rentals in Revelstoke. Now, we have approximately 1,128 rooms, so I knew that's not that approximate. But to have that number of rooms for our actual tax-collecting businesses, and then to have 193 available vacation rentals, that's a considerable percentage of our total room base. So I just wanted to put that bug in your ear, that it is growing exponentially every year on the vacation rental side of things, and it eats into what's available for our members here. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Billboards. So I'm not a huge guy on billboards for brand awareness. I think they're great for having your business promoted. I think that does a great job. But we do have one billboard that's near Golden, and we have to now follow the branding theory of Destination British Columbia in order to be partnered, at least for this incarnation. But we also worked in partnership with RMR, the golf club, with Kutney Rockies. We also basically paid for the Railway Museum billboards, and another one was a private one with one of our members with a Swiss Chalet motel, which will be completed in the spring. Of course, the ski shuttle is huge, huge benefit to us, both local and airport. When I go on sales missions, I have to have this product, or we cannot compete with it. And so we support through the Accommodation Association, both of these, in partnership with RMR and on the local shuttle, the City of Revelstoke. And we also go in partnership with RMR for the airport shuttle to do that. And this gives you some idea of ridership that's going there. So you look at 37, oh, 38,000 essentially riders in that four months. That's pretty significant for our local shuttle. And then for our airport shuttle, 4,500 people coming into town. That's pretty darn good. Partnerships. This gives you a real quick rundown of the partnerships that we have, and how we work with the Accommodation Association and the Chamber of Commerce all together as a team to work with these various clubs, the golf clubs, snowmobile. And this gives you an idea of the different initiatives that we've done with those associations. And that is 10 minutes done. From the tourism side, does anyone have any comments or questions for us?
Just a question about activities. Is there an activity that's growing more quickly, or is it just Revelstoke that's growing?
Well, you know, really, I mean, ski obviously is growing, but mountain biking is getting bigger. One of the areas, and maybe Megan can back this up, that we weren't really aware of was things like trail running, that we weren't really aware that we were a trail running destination, and then all of a sudden, oink, we are. Well, who knew? And then we're getting events being brought in for that. But we're really getting interested in, I think, just a sort of a general awareness of Revelstoke as a place to do some pretty soft adventure, like we were saying earlier on the videos, but also for that extreme kind of traveler as well. So it's good to have that mix, actually, and not be a one kind of trip town.
Just a comment. Good work on the digital, getting it out there via Instagram, how much it's grown. That does work.
And for 2016, we've actually hugely increased our budget and marketing plan for that. And that'll be, and Megan will be the minister in charge of that one.
Any other comments from council? Okay. Thanks for the presentation. Pretty exciting stuff, and I'm actually a little worn out, but just looking at all the extreme things that are going on, I'm going to have to, might have to take a break here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next delegation is Judy Goodman with the Chamber of Commerce.
Can I move on really quick? Well, I learned something new from Megan's presentation. I now know why I'm getting so many anti-aging ads on my Facebook. Okay, so the Chamber, for 2016, we've got an exciting year ahead of us already. We've got several new members in the younger demographic, so we're really excited about that. Last year, we did, excuse me, a couple of initiatives with young professionals. We did a series with the Rocky Mountain Year, and we had a business and beer event that was very successful with a technology session. So we'll keep moving in that direction. We have set our networkings for the second Wednesday and the last Thursday, which we're kind of moving around, but they're back to being that. We have various educational sessions, including Roger Brooks, who, if anyone hasn't heard me talk about Roger Brooks, they haven't talked to me lately. We're going to do a marketing session in the second quarter, technology in the third quarter, and a human resources session in the fourth quarter. Our retail, restaurant, and real estate group is really coming together, really collaborating. We just had a planning session in January. We had almost 30 people show up, and we came up with some awesome ideas. We're, May and September, we've had sidewalk sales. We're changing those to street fests, where we'll probably be asking to close down more streets to bring in more home business, more nonprofits, making it a really fun event, maybe having, and having people team up with each other. So what the retailers have said is, well, I want to invite, Big Mountain Kitchen might want to invite the local food initiative to be in front of their business. And we talked a lot about collaborating, how people can collaborate together, and just things like, we have bikes for a free one-hour rental from Scookham at the Visitor Center, maybe having those at Tim Hortons for a one-hour free rental, and maybe Scookham putting two-for-one coffee at Tim Hortons on their receipts to people. So doing that kind of thing. And right after we talked about it, people started doing it. So Vets hooked up with someone, and Big Mountain did a promotion with Ray's What's Your... So it's really cool. And people, every time I talk to people, they're thinking of new ideas. The other thing we really want to do is to do a Miracle on Mackenzie, which would be the second weekend in December. This would be, this would probably replace the Santa Claus parade, because that day isn't working for the Santa Claus parade, and just a lot of issues around that, and having a full two-day event with a light up and really making that something. So we've got a committee now of three people. Sean from East Rock, Donna from Tim Hortons, and Avet from Vets are going to run with that. So that's really exciting. We just need to get some money now. And we're going to do a builder trade session in Q1. Our advocacy. So we are applying for funding for a contract for the Business Retention and Expansion Follow-Up, and that will be related to workforce, sales, retail, food and beverage. That's where we heard people need more help in getting staff. Nearly half the business is planned to expand in the next three years, and 97 in the community. And so there's a lot of information in that study that can be followed up in an action plan. So we're hoping to get some funding for a three-month contract for that. Provincial and city signage. So in our highway meetings that we had in the fall, we asked people if they thought it would be a good idea to update our gateways with signage. And it started out as being Revelstoke next three exits, and the sign was on the eastern side of the Coast Hotel exit. And by the time everyone started talking about it, it ended up being five exits. So it's just, it's growing already. I mean, it's starting. But that will include wayfinding. It'll include highway industrial, big Eddie, and we're starting that next month. So I'm excited about that. So we're going to take it to the enhancement committee, and you guys will be hearing about that, because obviously, it's a huge project. It has to get your approval. It has to get provincial approval, all that stuff. But the gist of it is improving our gateways, making them safer. The Coast Hotel turn is going to become even more of an issue with the brewery coming in there and the eastern access turn. So, and of course, with the new major section, that's exciting, too. So we continue our advocacy on municipal property tax fairness and equity, and we just submitted a comment to council on the 2016-2020 budget. And going back to the Business Retention and Expansion Development Permit timelines, and this is also in the eye of the B.C. Chamber right now. They have a policy that's going to be UGM in May about actually possibly looking at a provincial standard for development permit timelines. It's an interesting policy. There is links to it through my newsletters and on our website if anyone's interested in looking at that. The Visitor Information Center, this is just a quick overview of how we did last year. We sneaked by. It's getting more and more challenging because we need more and more staff. There's just more people to help. More often than not, we have a line of people. We probably should have more than one bathroom. We had 11,000 people through in July. So yeah, it's, one of our biggest bills is actually toilet paper. But yeah, so, and we don't get a lot out of our merchandise and tracking because we just don't have the space, and we also don't have the time to help people. We're helping people find out what to do in Revelstoke and get them moving around the community. So we are, I'll circle to 2016. We are thrilled that the Accommodation Association has provided us with additional funding this year, so that hopefully, we won't be as dependent on grants, but we are applying for all the grants. We do currently have a CBT student grant that's good for three years. So we're pleased with that, but we really need to get the federal Canada Works grants. That's about $10,000 a year that we were missing, but ROSS stepped it up, so that's great. Destination B.C., you'll see the little additional project revenue, and that's thanks to Galen and Megan getting together and getting this Mobile Ambassador project going. So it gives us more resources, and it gives us more reach to fit people. Tourism budget, pretty straightforward. You can see that the city marketing is still important. It's still a valuable resource, particularly for things like camping and things that the Accommodation Association doesn't necessarily cover or cost on. But really, the digital marketing is, has become the focus of Megan's time, and so we're pleased to be able to partner with ROSS to bring that program through Megan. They've also increased our staff funding because Megan's time will be more focused on the digital marketing stuff and the raw budget. And everything else is pretty much the same. We still have our additional revenue that we do through partner programs and different things. Chamber, pretty much standard. We're not planning to do much different than we did last year, but that being said, we've got some new blood coming in hopefully soon, and that's July 1st. So this could change, you could see new exciting things. So that's it for my presentation. I did want to add that, and I have a letter here for each of the pastors. We did send a comment in on the budget. It's not on the city agenda. I don't think it's today, but it was submitted. Oh, is it? Okay. It was submitted. Our board and staff put a fair amount of time into it and consideration. And we were a bit taken aback when we saw that finance had asked for first, second, and third reading of the financial plan today. We would like, we requested in writing that that be postponed, at least until the next council meeting, and then in that two-week period, we get a chance to meet with council to review our comments, and particularly on the business tax fairness side, because we really need to, we need to find out where council's at with that, and we need to see if we're pulling in the same direction here as... So I have a letter, Dawn. Do you want to distribute that, or? So that's it. Did you have any questions for me?
Counselor Aaron Nixon.
Just a comment. Judy, we're entitled to make it to the college selection for the new dean, but really good news there that it'll be there still at Nell. But some really good energy from the community to town. And one of the comments from the college paying attention to Revelstoke now is they noticed the usefulness of the Chamber of Commerce. So that really in comparison to your conference, they said it really is.
Well, hopefully, we can find someone even younger. So I'm sure everyone knows that I'm retiring, Judy, so the board will actually be hosting shortly.
Question, Congressman.
Comments at the chair. Just all the work that the Chamber does. A lot of us came through the ranks of the Chamber and gone involved in the city because of the Chamber, and I know you guys do great work. And then also, to come forward and do all the work in the budget, too, is really, is really important to us.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Well, it's pretty obvious with the previous presentation, this one here, just how busy things are, and I think we've got some good crews that are doing the work for promoting in the community, and yeah, really want to applaud the work that the Chamber does. Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you. Moving into new business, administration.
Item 9A, I move that revised terms of reference for the committee to approve public events be approved.
Motion by Counselor Lemon, seconded by Counselor Brothers. Discussion, Counselor Lemon.
Yes, your worship. This is the committee able to approve a public events, public events, license for licenses. We had a discussion at the last committee about how we can streamline it. There's also concurrently a policy review going on. Basically, most of these events are run by volunteers, and it's a bit of paperwork to get all the city requirements as well as the liquor distribution requirements done. So what this does is streamlines the process. It still goes to the Cape Committee for approval, but instead of having to come to council for another approval, which kind of pushes all the timeline, it's just going to be approved or disapproved there. And then there's an appeal option. If people get turned out from the Cape Committee, they can always take it to council for a second opinion, and with, you know, the same timeline it runs with, I know that the liquor, provincial authorities have streamlined their application process recently, putting it online, which makes it a lot easier. And I think it'd be good for us, too, in terms of customer service, just to make it quicker for people. So it's pretty straightforward, and I'm very supportive of this.
Motion's on the floor to approve the revised terms of reference for the committee to approve public events. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you. Enforcement tender award.
Happy britches for your worship.
Let staff be directed to enter into by law enforcement officer services contract with Commissioners B.C. Option 2 commencing March 1st, 2016, for a three-year term with a two-year renewal option.
Motion by Counselor English, seconded by Counselor Duke. Discussion of the motion. Counselor Brothers.
Can I just ask one question? In the financial risk implications, talks about call-out will be limited in 2016 and will be made upon will be made upon the city's discretion. Is that a change from 2015, or when you say it's limited in 2016, what's that mean?
Your worship, that's just referring to the state within the budget.
Okay.
And this new contract has 10 more hours added to it, so hopefully that'll cover up a lot of that.
That's correct.
Any more discussion on this motion? Counselor Lemon.
Your worship, just a question about option 1 versus option 2, the difference being two branded vehicles versus one branded vehicle and a personal vehicle. The savings on option 1 seems to be, over the three-year term, about $30,000. And I'm just wondering if there is a little bit of information provided by staff here on the difference to that, including some liability issues, if that could be explained a little bit more in depth.
Ms. Rose.
Yeah, your worship, I'm sure you and counsel are well aware that by law enforcement officers need to be identified clearly by way of their uniform or identification of their vehicles. And staff are demands that both vehicles are branded, just in regards to the liability issues. Some proposed by law enforcement officers may not wish to use their personal vehicle because of the liability issue.
I just think it just increases the level of professionalism in the whole presentation of commissioners. So I'd be more inclined to be doing option 2 than option 1 myself. More discussion on the motion. Counselor Lemon.
Your worship, again, through the chair, another requirement for information, does this mean purchasing an extra vehicle, or what does a branded vehicle mean? I understand the concept, but I'm more interested in the details.
Teresa, you have information on that?
Yeah, it would be another vehicle similar to the animal control officer's vehicle, a branded vehicle, where the logos are on the vehicle, and it's...
But this price includes us buying another vehicle for commissioners.
That includes the commissioners providing those two vehicles.
They provide the vehicle.
They provide the vehicles, yes.
So it's not...
No.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Does anybody else have any comments or questions on this motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
I will bring forward 9C. The letter dated December 2nd, 2015, from Mike Hooker, superintendent of schools, school district number 19, on a disposition of Mount Baby Elementary School, be received.
Motion by Counselor Duke, seconded by Counselor Nixon, and Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation for us.
Your worship, very briefly, Mount Baby School site is a closed school, which is a property that the school district is looking at disposing of. We brought forward a letter to council with a series of options for the site, including a number of options of residential development, a number of options of parkland, as well as a key component, which is the gymnasium itself, and whether that building should be retained or removed from the property. The configurations include a number of access components from both 4th Street as well as from adjacent roadways. The response that we recommended to council is that we receive the disposition of Mount Baby's letter, as well as that although we appreciate the offer of the school gymnasium, that we decline acquiring this as an additional facility. It's not part of our class to try, and it's not a facility we have targeted use for at this point in time for a city use. We also recommend that council consider some form of a parkland space within this site be dedicated. However, we're asking that they go back to their public consultation, so they have their own consultation process that has to take place, and we're not recommending to council that they select a specific location for that park or type of park until that consultation takes place. So that's the third part of the recommendation, is to be asked that they go back and they do their consultation and ask that question of the community. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Brothers.
Ms. Strachan, I noticed in here, in part of your discussion, your options, you said that the multifamily development is probably the most supportable option, I guess from a planning point of view. And I noticed that in their proposal, I mean, they have a seven or eight or nine proposal where probably it could be developed. Are you in discussions with the school board as to what, from a planning point of view, we would like to see as a city?
Your worship, I was asked the question about this site, in particular, through this process. So when this letter arrived, we gave initial response. Key components we were getting in feedback is that we really do know how to see direct access to the main roadway to 4th Street. That's going to be a busy roadway, it's only going to get busier. Having driveways associated with multifamily development are really a nonstarter. Having people trying to back up into that roadway, or additional people trying to back up into that roadway, isn't going to work. Neither is a lane access or a road access, and that eliminated about 50% of the options that they provided to us. Secondary, the use or the acceptability of noise and traffic normally arises with density. So if you move forward with a multifamily tech development on 4th Street, it's more accepted by those purchasers that there would be a busy roadway up front than it would be with single family. There's likely an opportunity for transition from ground oriented multifamily to single family at the back, depending on where the park space goes. The OCP designation does allow for limited mixed use, and there may be a commercial opportunity for a mixed use component in one of the buildings, although that piece is fairly limited, and that there is not a residential density that's pedestrian in that neighborhood. So for example, coffee shop, whether they would get the numbers, and some people would have to do that business analysis for it, whether they would get the numbers to support their business there or not, you have to determine that business. But it's open as an option in the OCP at this point.
But if that's, from a planning point of view, you consider the highest and best use for that particular property, aren't we sort of talking to the city, to the school board, and saying, listen, you know, we've got all of these options, this one would probably be the highest and best use, and maybe you should take a look at that one as opposed to the others? Is that type of discussion that we're having with them?
I talked to Chavara CEO, met with the school district representatives, Mr. Hooker as well as Ann Cooper last Thursday, to discuss those specific things. What are no starters for us, from the city perspective? One, the direct access to 4th Street is a nonstarter. We've expressed our concerns with any major commercial on this site, where we think probably would be best suited to the highest best use, which is multifamily on the 4th Street frontage, transitioning back to sample duplex type housing, and some of the lots off the back. Further, are concerned with acquiring the gym facility, which is over 23 years old.
Thank you.
So a question about the gym facility. Was it being offered to us to purchase, or offered to us for no charge? That's my first question.
Your worship, it appears that they were offering to us at no charge. It does say acquiring, but the letter needs to be turned over to the city. I think there would need to be some clarification, and there is a recommendation in the report that if council wishes to pursue acquiring that building, that there'd be more analysis conducted on the state of that structure, as well as what the agreement would be with the school district for acquiring it. The remaining buildings on the site are coming down. What that means for that building as far as the city's intent on servicing, we don't have no idea.
Right. So has anybody from Parks and Rec, or anybody gone and looked at what could be options and costs and anything for us? The second part would be, and I guess I'm throwing out generally, is that, you know, like who's using it currently? I know that the boxing club is in there, I'm not sure who else is in there, but is there any opportunity, if that building is going to be torn down, that they could be, we could help amalgamate them into some other facility where they would have access to usage of the facility rather than just tearing it down and saying, good luck in the future?
So the school district is, if council chooses today not to accept the building, so not acquire it, that whole process then will take place through the school district. So they're going to be contacting the stakeholders, which are the user groups, I understand, the cadets, as well as the boxing club, to use that facility, and they'll do a whole consultation process. Council's decision would not be to tear it down, it would be a school district's decision following council's decision on whether they wish to have it or not. The school district could continue to keep the building if they wish. It's just a question of whether the city wants to take on that facility as an additional facility in the city's budget. At this point, the director of Parks and Recreation recommended against it, but it's the best option to save it.
Questions or comments?
Your worship, just for clarification, are we discussing recommendations 1 and 2, or just...
Just 1, the only motion's on the floor right now. I brought it up because he was talking about the building and giving us the presentation. So looking for any comments on... Just received a letter, so all those in favor of the motion? Motion's carried.
Forward 9C, part 2. The school district notified the city of Revelstoke appreciates the offer to acquire Mount Baby Elementary School gymnasium, however, at this time wishes to decline acquiring the facility. And the school district notified the city of Revelstoke supports a portion of the subject site being dedicated to parkment. And as part of the school district public consultation process, they seek to include no size tight locations of the parkment dedication and incorporate feedback into their rezoning application.
Motion by Counselor Duke, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion of the motion. Counselor Lemon.
Your worship, this item was referred to the Parks and Rec committee regarding the gymnasium, as well as the entire report. As is noted in the report, our request back to the planning department was basically, we don't have enough information to know what's going on here, such as, you know, the state of the building, how the services would work and everything. So we did refer it back to Development Services to get their opinion, and then this follows, which is a recommendation not to acquire the gymnasium. I have spoke with Mr. LaRose from Revelstoke Boxing Club about what they're doing. I guess I'm pretty ambivalent. This one, I don't have a strong feeling otherwise. As was mentioned by Mr. Strachan, this is not in the city's Parks and Rec master plan. We don't have this accounted for, so it's, as far as my understanding of how the planning process works, you know, you can't be just taking on something because it's all of a sudden there, or at least you should be very wary. And as is recommended in the report, that would require a study, because we don't know what we're getting into. It's built in 1993, who knows what shape it's in. However, you know, there is definitely a desire on the club's part to know what their future is beyond this facility, so I would like to at least have a discussion at this point on point number 2, especially acquiring or not acquiring the gymnasium, and some consideration over whether or not to explore, having a study about what the cost would be.
That's going to require amendment to the motion, or this motion be defeated and then it went down, because this motion's pretty explicit that we not acquire the building. So if you're thinking about doing something, this would be the time to do it.
Your worship, I'm not considering a separate motion at this point, I'm just trying to see where council's at.
Counselor Brothers.
I'm inclined to look at it from a planning point of view, and take maybe to what Mr. Strachan said, in terms of the highest and best use. I think it's important for us, it's on a major artery, and it's important for us to plan and make sure that that's the highest and best use, from my perspective, of that particular land, and encourage the school board to go in that direction. I recognize that, you know, there are people who are using that gymnasium, and I, you know, I would just say, as a city, you know, whatever we can do to help facilitate, to make sure these people can move somewhere else, these groups can move somewhere else, that'd be great, but I'm inclined to support this motion.
Counselor Solz.
In the same way, your worship, I'm inclined to support this motion, as planning department, they have had a conversation with people of the cadet corps. They have expressed an interest in moving from this facility that they vacate to where this movie club is now, where it's set at the end of March. I brought that up informally with the folks, people, and it's not to me on that, but that they understand we leave this facility and we're interested in moving. So in support of seeing them move somewhere else, and this may not fit into our budget in the future, I recommend this.
And I guess I could hear Counselor Lemon talking about, you can't plan for things like this, but when things come up, I think that we should always be at least taking the opportunity to look at something and see if it's worthwhile or not, and that's what is not going to happen here. I would like to know, is it free, or how much is it going to cost? How big a deal would the services be that may or may not be there? What's an estimate of operating cost, what's an estimate of the usage? But if somebody else came to me and said, we have a whole bunch of underused facilities, and we can accommodate all of these user groups without any trouble, that makes my decision-making a lot easier as well. But I don't really see any of that, so that's what I'm a little bit concerned about, is that, I'll be the first guy to say, is that I don't want to take on another building, another facility, but I have an easier time making a decision when I have all the information that I need to make that decision. And I feel like I'm making a decision in a little bit of a vacuum on this, so unfortunately, I'm not going to support the motion, because I think that the least that we should be doing is looking into it a little bit until, but we make a motion to say no, is there an opportunity to go back to on that? And I don't know, it's, we can't, other people are making decisions based on our decision, and Dean.
Your worship, if council would, to defeat the resolution and come back with a second resolution to explore further, we would be asking the school district to provide that information to the city about the building. Information they provided so far is that the classroom block is a park addition. I understand from Mr. Hooker that there's water penetration in that portion of the building, so that portion of the building needs to come down, and this has not associated with that component. As to what that means for the mechanicals, and what that means for the gymnasium structure, we'd be asking them to explore that. I'm not sure if that works with their timeline. They published a timeline that has this property going forward for rezoning application in the next two months. Whether they'd be able to produce that information and bring it back to council for further decision in the future, I'm not sure. They'd take some investment in studying how that building properly reviewed, as well as reviewed by an architect or structural engineers, what it would take to bring it up to a standard as an independent building. The full foyer and the classrooms are going, so this building is going to be just the gymnasium. So how, build a new entrance or new component, as well as new mechanicals for us, all our smaller little pieces, would have to be reviewed. I would anticipate it would take several months for the school district to prepare that as the Eponoff area now, they only have the two aircrafts provided.
Well, and I guess the second part of what I would like to see is Parks and Rec staff telling us that we are over capacity or under capacity in our facilities, and we can easily accommodate or not accommodate these other user groups, and, you know, I'm, those are the kind of things that I would like to see. Again, I guess it's up to council, with the motion's on the floor, to just say no, and take it from there. Counselor Brothers and Counselor Duke.
I mean, the only thing that you bring up, your worship, that I think, that I would like to see is how we accommodate these current user groups. I mean, that worries me in one sense, because we have groups that are utilizing it, and I agree with you, you know, if they have nowhere else to go, it's not a great thing to do. So, you know, maybe what we should do is take, just find out where these user groups can go, and then come back and deal with it. My concern is, I don't want to get bogged down in engineering reports and costs and all of that stuff, but I would like to know how we accommodate these user groups and make sure that, I mean, they're important to our community and make sure that we support them.
Well, I would hope and assume that in-house staff can give us a rough and dirty idea of the condition of what this is going to end up like. Counselor Duke.
Also speak to user groups, if there are people using it. The question at hand, as I can see, is does the city want to acquire a gym... The question at hand, as I can see, is does the city want to acquire a gym that's attached to a school that's going to be demolished? Do we want to acquire that is our question. And I can easily say that I do not think it's in the city's best to just acquire another building this time. We have a lot of buildings that are already breaking down. We do have golf courses and storage units and that kind of thing.
It's just another fallen down building, it's wrong on the list. Senator.
Your worship, this building does not belong to us at this time, as far as an assessment goes. It's going to stall the whole zoning reapplication process for the school board. I think that Parks and Rec can perhaps work with this user groups and help them find a home. But we're looking at asset management as our way of going forward. We look at shaving off the budget, we're hearing today. I don't think we need to take another building that has no washrooms and we don't have paychecks like there, so I would just support the motion as presented.
Mr. Strachan.
Your worship, the council wishes they could, there is going to be a consultation process the school district undertakes that involves the stakeholders. They recognize these users as the important stakeholders in the community. They stated that in the letter as well as stated that to us in our meeting next week. It could be requested staff participate in that consultation process, Parks and Recreation staff participate in that process as they find a new home for this group. I don't think there's a desire from anyone to say we sent a kick to the curb. These types of organizations are critical in the community.
Well, I think that's the bare minimum that we should be doing. Council English.
Could we amend the motion to have Parks and Rec look at options for the users that are there and be a good basis for it?
Mr. Strachan.
Your worship, just for clarity, it would be simpler for the school district to receive it as a second resolution, not the resolution that they have to take forward to.
It's more of an internal, that's an internal process that we could begin with. It's all right. It just keeps things simpler. So, motion is on the floor to decline the offer and have a process in place for dedicating apartment. Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Against, over against? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Okay. Now move forward, nine D. The council approved development variance permit application number DBQ 2016-02 and gave notice of our intention to consider issuance of development variance permit number DBQ 2016-02 for lots one dash ten and PCL eight lots twenty-six. To vary the following sections of zoning by law number one two six. Section eight point six dot six is varied to allow for increase in the maximum height of building from ten point five meters or two point five stories to twenty-six meters or five point five stories. And section eight point four point two one is varied to allow for reduction in the side yard setback adjacent to first street point six meters to three meters.
Motion by Council Dukes, second by Council Nixon, and Mr. Strachan, your presentation on this.
Very briefly, your worship.
Thank you.
As noted, we've got a site that is a full city block, includes a number of lots that are to be consolidated in order to allow for a hotel development on the subject property. This property is bound by First Street, Second Street, as well as two avenues on either side, and has a closed lane right away, which the property owner has purchased. The OCP designation for it supports this type of development, as does the zoning. However, the zoning includes a provision that limits the height to two and a half stories. And that provision is designed around the parameters of hotel motels, which were from the eighties, the section of the zoning bylaw was developed at that point in time, which follows a concept of the horseshoe with the parking lot in the middle, to prevent having to go with elevators as well as interior corridors, following the times when cheap heat was, heat was cheap, the building was expensive, so we limited your internal space. Most hotels are going towards an internal of multi-stories at this time. You see the city communities following suit with the list proposal, which is to have a five and a half story building, which is twenty-six meters in height. The building is proposed to be pushed forward towards First Street, reducing that setback from to three meters. This particular section of the zoning bylaw has a unique piece of regulation that the side yard setback for this zone is three meters, but in the section talks about uses and refers you to another portion of the zoning bylaw that says it is actually six for hotels and motels. So they have a special provision, I'm not sure what point it was added to the bylaw, but it's out of place with the rest of the zoning bylaw. So they propose to break it down to three meters on that particular side, retaining the six meter setback on the other sides, although in our zoning other side plan, there's adequate space to accommodate for that. So the building is pushed back on the First Street. That's an important component of the proposed development as the height is going to be located in the northeast portion of the property instead of the southwest portion of the property, where we likely create some shading issues for adjacent residential development on Second Street. In this scenario, because of the large hill that's beyond Victoria, the shading opportunity is not created by this building, particularly these homes on Second Street here, the hill is actually going to continue to be visible above the building. The gateway of a motel, this portion of it here in the north, the shaded houses shows that you will end up with some community shading on that portion of the building, but it's limited somewhat in where it's located. And the rest of the site for development is proposed to include surface parking as well as underbuilding parking to accommodate the stalls required for the development. Thank you, your worship.
Okay. Mr. Strachan. So, one of the, the, because I had stopped and seen Mr. Strachan earlier, we talked about this development and the way that the buildings are, the building is situated on the lot is that where the lot is closest to the single-family residential is going to be, no buildings there, just parking lot and entrances to the hotel.
There would be parking lot as well as landscape buffers, right, at landscape edges.
Okay. So, if they had gone back to the U-shaped motel, which is what was envisioned in there, then the residential side would have a building that would be two and a half stories high up to whatever, three meters or six meters from the property line?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay. And I think that what we'd also talked about was site lines and, because the building at one end would be higher than what would, if there was a two and a half story next to the residential development, that's not going to be parking lot and a higher building on the other side. How does, I know you were going to look at that, how does that change the site lines and things like that?
A two and a half story building at that proximity would actually be more active on the roadway as well as on the residential because it's so much closer. It's almost forty meters closer to those properties, so it brings it, close proximities. Although, even though it's only going to be two and a half stories, it's a flat face for the full length of the property would be facing it. You can see that in most of the hotel motel developments that we've got in town, the Days Inn, the Alpine. The back wall of those is normally your bathroom, so you end up with these very small windows and the air conditioner units are on that side. You're quite intrusive on the roadway and they don't have great street presentation.
Then the entrance coming into it.
The entrance, and the entrance would likely be off Right Street, it would be off Side End, so it would be a full building. Just to be clear, your worship, the council is only considering receiving the application and we're sending it out for notifications. They're not making a decision of approval on this, it's just to approve it, to be sent out, so the letters can go out to the neighbors and council will be asked to make a decision on this application as far as issuance of the permit at a future council meeting. This is just to get the process started.
Questions or comments, Council Brothers?
Just a bunch of, well, a few questions, Mr. Strachan. And I preface it by saying, this is really exciting, this is coming forward, and so I'm looking forward to where we're going with this. And, you know, Mr. Bruski has done a great job, as far as I'm concerned, with his other hotel development, his recent hotel development, so I'm encouraged that people who likewise hear it does go forward. But a couple of questions. What's the process? When you say it goes out for letters, and is there a public process other than receiving letters back or?
Your worship, the public process is indeed just that. We receive written submissions from now until the next council meeting, it's reviewed. There isn't a public hearing, as is with the zoning bylaw. This is a variance, perhaps, so it's comments and they come from the public and the guts to that, and they've begun to arrive already, so I want a new package. We're anticipating more will come once the letters go out. So tomorrow morning, Development Services staff will be hand delivering within a hundred meters of the subject properties, letters as well as they go up the mayup to the property owners.
In terms of height, I suspect, seeing the letter that has come forward, that that probably is going to be the thing that is the most controversial, if it is controversial. And I'm just a little curious, I noticed that what's zoned for there now is two point five stories or ten point five meters, and Mr., the proposal is for five point five stories or twenty-six meters. I mean, how big is a story? It's different from, like, if you know, see what it's zoned for, a story is roughly about four meters. If you see what is proposed, the story is about four point seven meters, if I make a division.
It depends on what ceiling heights they've proposed for different components. So you see lobbies, for example, that'll have eighteen foot ceilings, or you see lobbies that are eleven foot ceilings, it depends on what type of space they're trying to create. We don't have the detailed architectural drawings, and the applicant is indicated before he puts the expense of, for detailed architectural drawings, he plans whether he's building a two-story building or a five-story building. So, yeah, those details, certainly the limitation would be there on individual floor heights, just the thing with that twenty-six meters, you're not going to have fifteen foot ceilings in the rooms, that's for sure.
Sorry, one more question, I missed, one more question. Just underground parking, when it says partial underground parking, what does that mean?
That's the half floor that they're referencing, so it would be partially below grade. So instead of having a parquet upgrade, it's going to be partially submerged, so it allows for that concrete floor to be submerged below the ground. So when you enter, you'll be entering into the lobby, which will be half floor, mobile parking, so you'd be going down to the parquet, going up to go to the main part of the hotel. You see that in the floor plans. Partially submerged parking instead of fully underground.
Council Wyndham.
Your worship, just a couple of detailed questions. The first is, when we start giving notice tomorrow, if this is approved, it's written, how long will residents have to provide their comment? When is this likely to come back to council for further consideration? And although there is not a public hearing required through this process, is there going to be any opportunities for the public to attend an information session, that kind of meaning to provide a little bit more information?
Mr. Strachan, your worship, there's a public information session at my office every day. Anybody is more than welcome to come by and see it, and I encourage people to do, and we generally get people coming by to see us, when they have questions or concerns. There's not a formal public information as part of our process of developing variance permits, like the original ones. So there isn't one proposed for this application. It would likely come back to the chief council meeting for consideration of their issuance of permit. So the components are that the neighbors are provided the next fifteen days to provide information or ask questions or seek information. So my contact information appears at the bottom of each letter.
So this motion is just to notice of intention to consider the issuance of a development variance?
That's correct. It just triggers us to consult the board.
Council Salz.
Your worship, just a statement of context, and you were gathered to the property the other day and had a look at the trees. Trees on the First Street side are almost at the height that the opponent would like to build the building, so I think for those who are living in the area and see those high trees when they're in full foliage, they would get a good idea of the height and that would be a little more for that height.
Motion's on the floor. Is there any more comments or questions from council? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you, Mr. Strachan. Thomas Brook.
Your worship, I'll bring that forward. I make the motion that the staff and director prepare a petition, a petition, and require bylaws that Thomas Brook Water and Sewer Local Area Service, their parcel tax based on area, and grant it to Cal.
Motion by Council Salz, seconded by Council English. Discussion on the motion. What do we have in the council?
Your worship, just for background on that, the Thomas Brook area, people have asked for including the city water, and this is just taking that step one, or that process one step further, for local area service to pay for what they've been asking for.
Council Nixon.
Just, your worship, I have worries about this petition because of the size of two properties up there and petition language. I really hope that maybe it does a good job of setting the petition to each other.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm glad to see that this is going forward, this motion, and I encourage everybody to support it. This is something that I was working on previously as the mayor. There's, this is, as far as I'm concerned, this is, this is critical water upgrades that are needed. The residents of the ones that have been together, that have approached the city, we have gone through this, and it's unfortunate that the price tag is where it is, but that's the price of fixing and upgrading waters to a proper and safe standard. I know that there is also some work going on to try to look at options to help the price tag here, but this is part of the process to keep it going. And I just want to thank Mike Thomas and his crew for all the work they did that in getting us to the stage here. And again, like the big alley of water, I encourage those residents to look at this information and vote accordingly, but this is the proper thing to do. So anyways, motion's on the floor. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions on this motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Council Salz, you're going to do this next one?
That's your worship, nine F, engineering for water. I would like to propose that we refer this back to the finance committee for discussion. The public works sitting at that meeting, and we can do that as soon as possible, whether we can have a better idea of what can happen, ways of doing this.
Motion by Council Salz, seconded by Council Nixon. Discussion on the motion. I support this going back. The prices are just coming in a fair bit higher than what we anticipated, and as much as we have issues here, like we do in a few other areas that need to be dealt with, we have to be respectful of how much money that people can afford to pay, and I'm hopeful that when all the great minds at City Hall get together on a problem like this, that they're going to come up with other solutions to get this resolved. So I encourage council again to support this motion. Any other comments from council? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
And gee, your worship, I'll bring that forward. Alpine Lane Water Tender Award, make the motion that the staff be directed to enter into an MMCD construction contract with J. J. Construction, the Alpine Lane Water Upgrade Project.
Motion by Council Salz, seconded by Council English. Discussion on the motion. Council Salz.
Your worship, just for background, we have leaks in some pipes up along Alpine Lane, and this is a tender that can put forward to replace those pipes, so that we don't lose water for the city.
Council Nixon.
This is why we build research, your worship.
Oh, that's why we do that.
Water's the boss.
I thought it was the sewage lagoon was the boss.
Water's the boss. Water's the boss.
Any more discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Council Nixon.
Yes, your worship, I'll bring forward that bylaw twenty-one oh four, being a bylaw for the purpose of adopting the twenty sixteen, twenty twenty financial plan, be read a first, second, and third time.
Motion by Council Nixon. Is there a second here for that motion? Council Duke. Discussion on the motion. Council Nixon.
Yes, your worship, council is responsible for the budget as a whole. Council Salz and Council Nixon and Mr. Ingram do not go off into a room Councilor Solz and Councilor Nixon and Mr. Ingram do not go off into a room together and decide on a budget. This work has been ongoing since August, and it's been before council, and council has worked this table, and if we're hearing from the chamber today that they do not want it to proceed, I'm really disappointed that our council do not lean in and get the work done when we've had to be done. And this council did not cut any services, we added commissioner time, we added an RCMP, these are good additions for our community to keep it healthy and secure, and I personally in camera have offered cuts, and if we need to do cuts, that's what we need to do, but we need to look at what happened in Class 1. $80 million of Class 1 assessment got reassessed into Class 6, and that completely flipped the pie around, and you brutally put $750,000 of that dollars into a reserve, remember your worship, you upped it by 100,000, we had it 650.
Don't blame me for everything.
But caution on that, we know that over half of those pieces of property have already said they're appealing, their assessment, so if we get something that we're only paying back 40%, that's 750, I will be pleased with 40% of that, because I sat with council table when we had to come up with 300,000 and give back two properties that got reassessed residential, and council has no control over the PC assessment authority, council has control over how we govern, and part of our job as governing is to set a budget that is fair, and that's what we were working on, and we brought it forward in a draft budget of 00, and I said to you, when you offer out a budget of 00, it is really hard to go back to your public and say, guess what, we need to add 2 men, and we just, we missed the vote on this. If we upset the chamber that much, we need to look at those last two pages of the financial plan, and we need to look at what's in miscellaneous there, what people are willing to part with, and I think this budget needs to go through as it is. I think Mr. Ingles has worked with council very hard on this, and we have had six months to sit here and decide what we're going to cut, and we didn't cut, and we added services.
Okay.
Councilor Duke? Through the chair, your worship. I just did not expect this to come, I know we're working on a budget and on and on to go, it was right, the last time we decided around the table that we were going to make a suggestion of what we wanted to put on residential or commercial, sorry, percentage increases, and that's what we sent out. There was no point in time where that came back after it being sent out, that it came back to this table for us to then continue that discussion. It came forward to approve it, so at no point did it ever come back, I guess right now it's discussion, I suppose, right? So I'm not at the point where I'm going to vote in favor of this right now, for 23.
Councilor Rivers?
I say the same thing as Councilor Duke. I was a little surprised that this was coming up today, because I, like Councilor Duke, thought that we were, you know, after we had discussed it, it was going out of the public comment, and then we were going to come back and discuss it, and again, we're discussing it today, but there has been comment, which has been made by the chamber, they've put a lot of time and energy and work into this. I think the chamber is a little distressed at the fact that we don't seem to be moving toward a 2 to 1 ratio, as we had indicated that that was one of the things that we wanted to do as a council. I think from the understanding that I have, the limited understanding, and just had discussions with the chamber, that we're moving backwards instead of forwards in that direction, I think it's, you know, when someone does so much work and contributes to the information that we have that assists us, like the focus group, I think it's incumbent upon us to sit down and at least take a look at it. This is a lot of work that's been presented, it helps us out if we, you know, set it aside for another two weeks and move forward in two weeks with our final discussions on this. I think that's better than moving on it now and not taking into consideration some of the comments that the chamber wants to hear. So I agree with that, Councilor Duke, I'm not in favor of moving forward today on this thing.
Is there any other comments on this motion? Councilor Solz?
Your worship, having thought about this, I was approached this morning by a member of the chamber asking us to relook at this, and I understand where Councilor Nixon's going this far, so that we could be put into this, but at this late date, I'm going to actually decide with Councilor Rivers and Councilor Duke and ask if we could be put off for a couple more weeks, just to have a look at what the chamber is looking at, so that I can understand what they're talking about. Because it's not clear to me what they're talking about, and I understood what we were doing when we sat down with Mr. Ingles, but this part I'm not quite understanding, I would like to have possibly the chamber explain what they're talking about, so that I can better understand that, and that's where I come from on this.
Any other comments around the table? Councilor Orlando?
Yeah, your worship, thank you. I tend to agree, I guess, with Councilor Brother Solz, and we can close that type to wait for two weeks and take a look at some of the comments, I think there's an opportunity to do that. I, you know, I don't disagree with Councilor Nixon, that we put a lot of work into this, and we're there, however, you know, my concern last time was, when we discussed this, is one of the items that's been sort of near and dear to the Chamber of Congress as hard is the breakdown of business tax versus commercial tax ratio. I feel that there's an opportunity to find more information, but also communicate our position, for example, in our last budget discussion, when we learned that the residential values are increasing at a higher rate than the commercial values over time, as Mr. Ingles explained it to us, if we do shift, for example, in the case of this budget, 2% to 1%, that that is actually heading towards a goal, and it doesn't appear so when you chase the ratio, as they say, but it is slowly heading towards, so it's an opportunity for two-way dialogue. And I would also like to comment that, you know, there is another comment added on to this, another thoughtful comment added on to here from another resident talking about heritage values, and that might also be an opportunity to dialogue on two things. I think we have the benefit of not having like three hours to get this off to Victoria at this point, so I don't know if two weeks is going to be a good one.
Councilor Nixon, can I suggest that we have one more joint meeting, invite the chamber, have one more financial session?
Your worship, I'm fine with that, I see how the vote is going to go, I'm a big girl. And the chamber keeps going on about Penticton, and I know they had Penticton up to talk to the chamber and stuff. Penticton found between 1 and 2% of their budgets, 1 and 2%, and this council is finding 1 and 2% by attrition and opportunity all the time. Our city staff are good staff, they work hard for the city of this state, and I think we need to respect that, and I think we need to be, when we come back to this table, and if we are looking for another 1 or 2% so that the chamber business owners don't have to pay as much, every council sitting around this table needs to have a good idea of what we're going to cut, because I have made my suggestions in camera, and I think that council needs to decide what direction, what services they're not going to be providing.
Councilor Duke?
The chamber is not looking for, well, they are looking for budget cuts, but that's not their primary focus, their primary focus is taking a look at how we're splitting our tax base, so how much are we putting on the business sector, and how much are we putting on the residential, and how that split exactly looks, and what we're looking as a council to do in order with it, so that's...
Can I just respond to that, your worship?
Absolutely.
That pie split happens because Mr. Ingles explained it to the chamber, the Class 1 that got flipped to Class 6 makes it look that way, and we don't know how much of that Class 6 that got flipped is going to flip back, and then we had 54% of residential money last year, and we might have it back creeping back up there.
I think that's going to be an excellent topic to bring up at our next debate.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. Yeah.
Mr. Chabot?
Your worship, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I don't think council should be surprised to see this on this agenda in this format. I think if we all recall, council had set a goal, wanted the budget adopted by the end of December, we're two months behind target already. Council has an obligation to provide a public input opportunity with respect to its proposed financial plan, and it's not one of 10 different versions or options, it's the one that you have studied and worked on and intend to adopt, but I think saying that, some good input has come from the chamber and from some others that bears some consideration, but if the consideration of that input results in fundamental changes to the structure of the financial plan, and a shifting of tax burden from commercial and residential, I think you're back to needing to vote and have public input respecting your proposed financial plan again, because I, as a resident homeowner, taxpayer, feel like I have an opportunity to be heard as well, and the council should keep in mind that the proposed tax increase for residential taxpayers is twice that of commercial business owners.
Well, we don't know what the meeting's going to be, but I think that it's important that we do have that meeting. We've gone out and we've asked for comments to come in for February the 17th, and those comments have come to this table today, and I just don't think that we, I don't think the council's had enough time to really grasp the implications to that and to put it off, and I would like to suggest the meeting be done as soon as possible, so that this budget comes back for the March 8th meeting for approval. And I guess I just want to, everybody's talking about the chamber, but I want to remind everybody, and I'm sure everybody knows, that the chamber's representing the business community, and the business community has said lots of things, and so I just don't want to shoot the messenger, because it is a message that a lot of people around this table, and not just this council, but previous ones have heard as well. So, Councilor Nixon, I would like to suggest that maybe come up with a motion that has a meeting, bring the budget back for the March 8th, is...
No, I think just send the vote through, and then somebody else will find that.
Motion is to approve the budget for the financial plan.
Motion's in first, second, third reading.
Yes, sorry. Do you either have that for voting or for...
Voting in favor of the original motion.
Motion's on the floor, first, second, third reading, all those in favor? All those against? Motion's defeated. Who would like to put a motion on the floor? Councilor Rivers?
Like a motion to defer the first, the second, and third reading of the financial plan in two weeks from now, I think that's where it should be, what they said, and in the meantime, that we have a meeting with the chamber and council to review the chamber's report and suggestions with respect to the tax ratios.
I need a second here for the motion. The motion is to defer reading to March 8th and have a meeting between council and the Chamber of Commerce, I'm assuming Finance Department was part of that. Does anybody just like to second that motion?
Point of border, I'm just concerned about the technicality of deferring, is that something that we can do, defer for two weeks to March 8th, is there any legal...
Well, typically, a motion to defer is made when there's a motion on the floor, and one of the first considerations, some later date. I think probably, properly, it would be that the draft financial plan be returned to the regular agenda for March 8th, and that this meeting will be a relation.
I say it in those words.
Does anybody want to second that motion? Councilor Solz? Discussion on the motion. Councilor Nixon?
Just to add in the letter on the heritage strategy, so that group of individuals that have written lettering to unlet you and some forgotten.
Does anyone move her in the second here?
Yes.
Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Against? Motion's carried, Councilor Nixon, go ahead. Oh, I got you on one. Where are you? Question? Sorry, that one's got the correspondence hat. How was candidate's support letter request? Anybody like to make that motion? Councilor Orlando, seconded by Councilor Solz. Discussion on the motion? All favor? Motion's carried. Communications, does anybody have any comments on the environmental advisory minutes of October 15th? The social development minutes of November 25th? Special public works minutes, January 12th? Parks, Rec, and Culture events, January 13th? Committee to approve public events, February 2nd? Development Services Minutes, February 6th? RCMP Community Policing Report, December 31st and January 31st? The Association of Farmers Markets, January 22nd? Councilor Orlando?
Your worship, in this letter, there seems to be a request to extend the, or to write letters, support that kind of thing, I was wondering if council would be willing to consider that?
If you make it a motion and it gets seconded, we vote in favor, I would say yes.
Sure, sure, my motion is that the cities send a quick letter expressing support for program mentioned in the PC Association of Farmers Market.
Okay, motion, seconded by Councilor Nixon, together again. Discussion on the motion? Councilor Solz?
Your worship, just for my involvement with the farmers market over the years, with my son's corn product, this nutrition coupon program works very well for those who need, and I just think it's a great program, and I'm prepared to be supportive of this.
Any more comments? All favor? Motion's carried. B.C. Lunging Association, rate on where, February 9th? Build candid grant funding? Queen Victoria Hospital helipad update? Need to hear more about that, we did have a meeting with the hospital. Bylaw enforcement, 2015 year-end report? Questions from the media? None from me. No? All pretty clear. Mr. Cooper?
I think I've got what you're talking about today. Okay.
Does anybody don't get it most days?
No.
Motion to adjourn?